Thank you.
Whoever wants to go first. I, Sandra Melendez.
I, Sandra Melendez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The state of New York.
The state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the powers and duties.
And faithfully discharge the powers and duties.
As village trustee.
As village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
May I just be all on your own?
I, Christopher Menardi.
I, Christopher Menardi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of New York.
The Constitution of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the powers and duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the powers and duties.
As village trustee.
As village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, so we're just gonna take, we're gonna take a five-minute break before we start the meeting, and just like the families if they could take photos, and then, you know, the families can leave and then we can continue with the meeting. So just give us five minutes, just take some quick photos.
Oh, it's not a rush, don't worry about it, don't worry about it. Yeah, that's fine. Not a problem.
Hi. I thought it was you, but I wasn't sure, my eyes are so bad, and then I just heard somebody say Tiger. So I just came to call you.
Where's everybody else? That's all right. That's all right. That's all right. All right. We're all good, we're all good, we're all good. You didn't ask me, Rob. No.
All right, everybody. Thanks. Hey, Robbie. Thanks, buddy. All right, we're gonna get back to the meeting. Thanks, Jimmy. All right. Becky, we, um, we're good now? Is LTV back on?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we're called back to order here, and next business, our format's gonna be a little different than the previous board, so all resolution proposals will be read by June, and then we will, um, we will make motions and seconds and votes. So, you ready, June?
Mayor, Hugh King is here.
Excuse me?
Hugh King is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hugh, come on up.
Thank you, Your Honor.
It's my favorite part of the show.
Thank you for getting your question.
Okay, now that LTV is, is here, I just wanna tell everybody out in the LTV land that Home Sweet Home is open on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, Friday and Saturday, 10 to 12, and 1 to 4, and Sunday, 1 to 4. Then right up the street, the Gardner Mill Cottage is open on Friday, Saturday, Sunday from 1 to 4, and then you can call up the East Hampton Historical Society and get a tour of the Moran House, the Thomas and Mary Nimmo Moran House. So you could see all three of those historic buildings in one day, at least in one weekend, okay? Now, the last time I was here, the last couple of times, I've been asking questions of board members, and then they've been asking questions of me, so it's board members' turn this week, is that okay? If I ask everybody a question?
Sure.
Okay. Trustee Brown, you were, spent time on, at the Village Green, Sliding Down That Hill, you said, by Mill Hill.
Yeah, we used to take the kids there, yeah.
Okay, well, I would like you to investigate the history of the flagpoles that have been down there. There have been three flagpoles on Village Green.
Okay.
And what happened to the first two? All right?
All right, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Trustee Melendez, you ran on the Newtown party to get elected. Well, can you find out how did Newtown Lane get its name? Where does it come from? Newtown Lane?
Happy to.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Larson, you had a job previous to becoming the mayor. Well, the first mayor or president of the village, Jonathan Baker, also had a very important job before he became the first mayor in 1920. Can you find out what Jonathan Baker's previous job was?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll get back to you.
Trustee Menardi, you spend a lot of time down at Main Beach. He's a lifeguard, he's not sitting on the pavilion with the old people, okay? Can you find out when the village bought the Main Beach properties, and for how much it was?
1927, and I believe they bought it for $27,000 from someone named Turbell. I, I, the information's at home.
Good, you better go look it up, because that's not right. That's all right, that's a good guess. Okay, and trustee Graham, at the last meeting, you asked me questions about the Maidstone Club, which I flunked, but you mentioned two members of the Maidstone Club, one of them I wanna talk about today, and then the other one you can investigate. One of the presidents, I believe, of the Maidstone Club was Dudley Roberts. Okay. Dudley Roberts, I was giving a talk at Old East Hampton, I don't know, 15 to 20 years ago, and we were talking about lamenting how historical buildings were leaving, or that they were being torn down, and we talked about the Dominique House, and he raises his hand, and he says, "I have the two workshops." In 1946, when they tore down the Dominique place, Dudley Roberts saved the two workshops. He offered them to the village and to the Historical Society, and nobody wanted them, so he put them on his property up at Further Lane. But he did something even better than that. In the 1950s, they found the Dominique tools at Ethel Morriston's antique store in South Hampton. She had managed to wrangle them out of the Dominique family, so they took them to the DuPont Museum, and the DuPont Museum wanted the two workshops, and Dudley Roberts said no. So he saved them twice, and where are they today? Right, right down the street, being put back where they belong. All right, and the last thing is, trustee Graham, your question is, one of the founders of the Maidstone Club was Frederick Gallatin. Well, he did two other things that were really, really important to this town besides finding the Maidstone Club. All right. Things may have changed, but guess what? There are still five women up there, and two of them are on the board. I'll see ya next time.
Thanks, Hugh.
Number one, accept the results of village election conducted on Tuesday, September 15th, 2020.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
All opposed? None? So carried. Passed and carried.
Number two, appoint Gerard Larson as village mayor, term to expire 2024.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed and carried.
Number three, appoint Christopher Menardi as village trustee, term to expire 2024.
Motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So carried.
Number four, appoint Sandra Melendez, I'm sorry, as village trustee, term to expire 2024.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number five, appoint Christopher Menardi as deputy mayor, effective immediately.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number six, notice the organizational meeting to be held on October 16th, 2020, at 11:00 a.m. at the Emergency Services Building, 1 Cedar Street.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number seven, approve claim vouchers for the month of September.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number eight, approve warrants, number five, number seven, number eight, from general fund, number three, from the trust fund, number six, from the Lo Sap fund, and number nine, from the capital fund.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number nine, approve departmental reports.
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number 10, accept new members of the fire department, Duval Flores, engine company number two, Mica A. Jones, engine company number three, and David Cheney, fire police company number six, as per Chief Terz's September 15th memo.
Make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried. Thank you for your service.
Number 11, accept the resignation of ambulance association member Dave Weaver, a member for 31 years, effective September 1st, 2020, as per Chief Shard's September 1st memo.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried. Dave, thanks for your service. 31 years is a long time. Thanks so much, I wish you were here.
Number 12, deem items listed as surplus, approve all items deemed surplus to be listed for sale by Auctions International Online, accept all bids received that meet or exceed minimum bids, set and approve disposal of unsold items, as per Department of Public Works Superintendent Collins' September 9th memo. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number 13, approve annual maintenance agreement with website beautiful for the Home Sweet Home Museum website. So moved. So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number 14, adopt resolution number 54, 2020, authorizing an agreement with National Grid for Lily Pond Lane pavement restoration reimbursement in the amount of $112,500, as per August 19th memo from D. Collins with attachment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number 15, adopt resolution number 55, 2020, hereby appointing Devin McGinnis to the position of full-time emergency medical technician, critical care, at an annual salary of $59,300, effective October 1st, 2020, and that's as per September 15th memo from Chief Tracy.
Motion to accept?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried. Welcome to the village family.
Number 16, accept lowest bids received from Firematic Supply Company, chief fire and safety equipment, South Shore Fire and Safety, and Coastal Fire Systems for assorted equipment for the East Hampton Fire Department, as per the September 15th, 2020 bid specifications.
Motion to accept?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number 17, notice to bidders for the Herrick Park IA septic system, with the bid opening to be held on Friday, October 9th, 2020, at 2:00 p.m. at Village Hall.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number 18, resolution, sorry, adopt resolution 56, 2020, hereby adding a new category to the East Hampton Fire Department Service Award Program point system concerning the COVID-19 pandemic of 2020.
Motion to accept?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number 19, adopt resolution number 57, 2020, hereby adding a new category to the East Hampton Village Volunteer Ambulance Association Service Award Program point system concerning the COVID-19 pandemic of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number 20, approve listed traffic control officers and specialists, seasonal police officers, paramedics, and critical, critical care EMTs to work during the winter months, that'd be September 18th, 20, to May 16th, 2021, for recall assignments, maximum of 20 hours per week, as listed in Chief Tracy's September 15th memos. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Number 21, approve list of special events for winter months that require T. traffic control officers, as per Chief Tracy's memo.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
Addendum number one, hire the following lifeguards, effective immediately, Jason Bruner at $18 an hour, James Menardi at $25 an hour, and Matthew Norkland at $18 an hour.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just make a note, Chris is recusing himself, and all in favor? We did that? Opposed? None, so carried. Welcome back, Jimmy.
Number two, authorize employment of the following lifeguards to work September 26th and 27th, 2020, at call-in status at current hourly rates, Tyler Shaw, Alex McDonald, Alyssa Neeland, Skyler Menardi, Aiden Cooper, Reed Jones, Lucy Short, Kevin Bunce, and Luke Campbell.
So moved.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried. Again, make a note, Chris is recusing himself from the vote. Is that it?
Yeah.
I don't have the agenda in front of me, sorry. I left it in my office.
I'll make sure I open your packet.
Chris, just make an announcement as to keeping the beaches open.
Yeah, thank you. So, what we would like to do is, we would try to keep the beaches open as long as we can, weather permitting. There are a lot of people at the beach right now, we've got the COVID pandemic, which has escalated a lot of the, the traffic and, and attendance at the beaches. Last weekend was, the weather was iffy, but there still were a lot of people there, and when the lifeguards leave the beach, there's 20, 30 people in the water. We are at the height of hurricane season, rip current season, this is a really dangerous time to be in the water, and the water's very warm, as you well know, so what we wanted to do is, we wanted to do our best to keep the beaches protected. As you know, about a month ago, there was a tragedy that happened in Napeg, and again, anything we can do to try to avoid that and keep our beaches as safe as possible and guarded is a top priority of, of me, and I know this board as well, so we're gonna do our best to keep the beaches, and hopefully the bathrooms, we've been getting some great support, and I've been just getting caught up to date with the help of Becky and everyone, so, you know, it's gonna take a little bit of time, but everyone's been great, and as much as we can provide the public with some access to the beach, and safer waters, then, then that's our objective. So, we've got a great team, and I look forward to trying to keep them open as much as we can.
Thanks, Chris. I went out of order and I missed public comment. I, I do agree that we should have the public comment before we start the meeting, that's my error, so is there anybody here who needs to address us? Anybody in the public? All right, so that's good, I didn't offend anyone. Do we have anything else? All right, so I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
To make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
To executive session, Mayor?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go into executive session to discuss legal matter and some personnel, if we need to return, we'll notify the press, and we'll reconvene. Yes, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if questions were allowed at the beginning, though, because of the public.
Yeah, that was my mistake. Questions are certainly allowed. Yeah, no, if you have a question, if you could step up to the microphone, though, that would be, just so for LTV can see you and... All right, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I was just wondering, I see some of your papers, but there are others that I never had the privilege to read them, and I wonder if there was a certain number of trustees you will be having, is there a limit, or?
Oh, well...
How does this happen? It seems to me you ran with two, and then I see Tiger there, and I don't know how that happened.
So, so the way it works, the village government has a mayor and four trustees, and four trustees. So, every two years, there's an election. One year, one set is, there's two trustees who are up, and then the next time, there are a mayor and two other trustees who are up. So, this election that just passed, we had, there were two trustee seats available and one mayor seat. So, and when Tiger ran, he's halfway through his, his term, so he, he keeps his seat on the board.
Until term two.
And for two, two more years, and then he's up for reelection.
Ma'am, could you just identify yourself for the record? Yes, we have to put it on record.
Barbara Anderson Terry. And I have one more question.
Sure.
I assume you have your liberty to keep as many people as you want in certain positions in the village, correct?
Yeah, what are you referring to, like the...
I wonder if you have the privilege of either keeping them or dismissing them and hiring your own people.
It depends on the, it depends on the position. Some positions are contractual, and at the end of their contract, the village board has a decision to either keep someone or to let them go. The addition, the, the other boards that we have, like the DRB, and the ZBA, and the, and the planning boards, they all, all the people who are on those boards have term limit, they're, they have a term, and when those terms expire, the Board of Trustees has a decision to make, either to reappoint them, or appoint someone new.
Now, that's very informative, thank you. If one were to go on the village's website, would you see those names and their terms?
You'll, you'll see their terms, but, I mean, no, no, you'll see their names, but you don't see the terms. Maybe we should add that, Becky, that might be a good idea, because I, I looked for the same thing when I was running, and I couldn't find the, when they expired. So that would be good, maybe we could add that, that's a good point. Oh, thank you very much. And thank you for coming and asking questions. Is there anybody else? All right, so then, we'll adjourn this meeting? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're adjourned, thank you so much, everybody.